Okay. Meeting come to order. Welcome to the Neighborhood Board fourteen. Just a few administrative announcements. First, if you have a cellphone, please turn off your cellphones. Our guest of honor is not here yet, so we'll wait. I want to also congratulate all of those candidates who won their primaries and wish you the best of luck during the general. So, spill you out, you know who you are. And the third thing is, I'm really surprised that, and I've been on this board for so long, but it's the first time we got something free from the Neighborhood Commission. And I'm going to ask our secretary to unveil or unfold the banner, okay? I've been on the board since two thousand and eight. It's the first time we got anything free from the Commission that we didn't have to pay for it ourselves. So, thank you very much, Neighborhood Commission. And I'm going to give this for safekeeping to our secretary, Chance. And he's going to figure out how we're going to hang this for the next board meetings, right? Okay, I'll leave that one to you. So, thank, thank. Who do we thank, by the way, Camelia?
Me?
Me?
Yeah. And Theo.
Hey, alright. It's not coming out of your salary, yeah? Oh, yeah, I hope not, yeah. Thank Lloyd, I know, this is ideal. Anyway, thank you. Wow, did we do the other right? Let's see. Second Monday. We better not change our time. Yeah, okay, very good. When we have the parade, by the way, guys, we're going to use the one that's in my car. It's much bigger. We know that one. And Darren, you're in charge, so I remember that. And I got this, we still got. Okay, any questions? Okay, let's begin. First of all, we have reports from the, a little fire department first. Wow, you come in fours, there are four of them. Alright.
Good afternoon. My name is firefighter one Zach Buscher on behalf of the Honolulu Fire Department and the Kualakini Fire Station, Station Four, right down the road, by the bakery. The statistics to follow represent confirmed number of incidents in the Leleha, Puunui, Halewa, and Ka'ameha Meha Heights geographical area for the previous month of July twenty twenty-four. So, we had three nuisance fires, which are small rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle, two activated fire alarms. We responded to one hundred and four medical emergencies and two motor vehicle crashes. Fire safety tips of the month, back to school fire safety, educating students on what they can do to stay safe during the school year is important and often overlooked. College students living away from home should take a few minutes to ensure they are living in a fire-safe environment. We would also like to advise residents to not overload outlets. Keep lamps, light fixtures, and light bulbs away from anything that can burn and never use an extension cord with large appliances like a refrigerator. Cook only where it is allowed. Keep the cooking area clean and free of anything that can burn. Also, if a fire starts in a microwave, keep the door closed and unplug the unit. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any from the audience? Any from WebEx? Guess not. Thank you very much.
Right on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Alright. Next. Jeez, the four guys who's manning the station. HPD, are you on board up here?
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Oh, you can't see me? How about now?
I can see me?
Let me try some. Sorry about that.
We can see you.
You can see?
Online.
Oh.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, good evening, Chair, Board, members of the community. Lieutenant Yamashita from the District Five Kalahi area. Before I got started, I just wanted to go over some of the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. I was able to check the minutes and one of the concerns that was brought up was the robbery that occurred in the Poonawai area. So, it's an unfortunate situation that the juvenile male had to go through such a traumatic experience. And I just wanted to clear the air and bring some clarity as far as to the case because I understand that a lot of people thought that the case was actually closed. But if the case is not actually closed, it's actually marked as pending further developments. So, that means if we get any more leads or any more information regarding the case, it's still open to discussion for the case. They can still further the investigation. So, as far as the case goes, I was able to read some of the case notes and the detective's follow-ups. And the detective was able to canvass the area and he was able to locate some video surveillance. Unfortunately, some of the cameras were inoperable, so they weren't working at the time. And other cameras that were in the area didn't capture the incident because the incident was out of view from where the cameras were shooting. So, another factor is the male was wearing a white beanie and he was wearing also a facial mask. So, it made it a little harder to even have any distinguishing facial characteristics. So, if you guys do have any further information or any leads, you can always contact our Criminal Investigative Division, Robbery Detail. So, the case is still open. It's just pending any further developments from the community. Hopefully, you guys, if you guys hear or see something that possibly might be related to the case, by all means, you guys can go ahead and contact our Criminal Investigative Division, Robbery Detail, and add to the case. I hope that answers you guys' questions.
Yeah, I think it does.
Okay, and then one more thing I wanted to touch on for that case is, since it was classified as a robbery in the first degree, I know someone was asking about the statutes of limitations regarding the case, but it is, for a Class A felony, the statute is six years. So, it has to be commenced within six years after the crime was committed. I hope that also answers some of you guys' questions.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. So, moving forward, I'm going to go, I would like to talk about the statistics for the month of July. So, for the month of July, we had one aggravated assault, which remained the same compared to the month of June. For the month of July, we had eleven auto thefts, which is a decrease from the month of June. In June, we had thirteen. Burglaries remained the same for June and July. We both had two. Robberies, we decreased also. It went down to one compared to three in June. Sex assaults, we remained the same. It was, it remained at one for both months. Simple assaults, we had a slight increase of four compared to two in June. Thefts, we had twenty-one in July compared to eighteen in June. And for unauthorized entries into motor vehicles, we had eleven, which remained the same in June. Total calls for service for the month of July, we had thirteen hundred and seventy calls compared to the month of June where we had thirteen hundred and thirty-two calls. So, I'd like to touch a little basis on some of these cases that I just mentioned. So, for the one sex assault that we did have in the month of July, it was regarding a female that was staying at a care home. And she was, she's, she had surgery and she was recovering over there. And she reported being inappropriately touched by one of the nurses over there. She was able to document the case with HPD. Detective followed up, from sex crimes, followed up with her and was able to further investigate it. But in the end, the female decided not to prosecute and she wa, and she elected to withdraw her complaint. So, she no longer wanted to further the case with HPD. As far as this robbery case, the one robbery that we had for the month, I also wanted to touch on that a little bit. It was a male that returned home and he noticed another male outside of his residence holding items from within his house. So, he confronted the male suspect. The male suspect fled. He gave chase after the male suspect. The male suspect turned around and brandished a firearm and told him to stop following him. Fearing for his life, he decided to stop. And then a short while after, the officers that work in your community did an outstanding job and we located and detained the possible suspect matching the same description as the male that just committed the burglary or the robbery. We were able to bring the complainant down over to the area where the suspect was being detained. And he was positively identified and arrested. A search warrant was conducted regarding his backpack that he was wearing. None of the complainants' items were located in the backpack or on the suspect's person. And the firearm was not located as well. So, the prosecutor, prosecuting attorney's office decided to downgrade the case from a robbery first to a terroristic threatening in the first degree. And the bail was set at eleven thousand dollars. And the last case that I did want to talk about and go over was a burglary case, which occurred up in the Halewa Heights area. So, basically, husband and wife, they're moving out from their house. They had a safe in their secured garage, but the safe was not bolted down to the ground. Upon returning, they inspected their house. It's pretty much empty. They checked the safe and they noticed that three firearms were missing from the safe. They're not sure if the safe was secured or not at the time. So, a theft case was generated for the firearms, a theft in the first degree. And we still have no leads on that case either yet. So, just a safety tip for you folks. If you guys do own firearms, make sure you guys place it in a secure area, first of all. And secondly, make sure that you guys lock and secure your guys' safes because now we have three outstanding firearms on the streets that are unaccounted for at this time. So, just a little safety tip for everyone. At this time, I would like to take any questions or comments or concerns if you guys have any.
Let me start off with a couple of questions. When you talk about car thefts, what kind of cars are they looking for? And the second question in regards to that quote-unquote burglary in Halewa Heights, is that on the upper Halewa Heights or lower Halewa Heights? You know, in that one area?
So, the burglary that occurred is in the upper Halewa Heights area.
Okay.
And then it's.
Go ahead.
And then for the other, I'm sorry. And for the other question regarding what type of vehicles are stolen, there's not really a specific type of vehicle that is being stolen. It's a, it's all types of vehicles that are being stolen at this time.
There's no vehicle of choice, like I heard, like Hondas or stuff like that?
Nah, not.
Definitely not American, right?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. Other questions? Don?
Um, this happened in August. There was a homicide on Kualakini Street. Can you give us some kind, what type of homicide was this? It was on August second. I picked it up under your crime mapping. And I would like to know more information because this is a homicide. To me, it's a very serious case for us in the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm not exact, do you have the report number or case number for that case?
No, I want, I want to took down the, it happened in August second. And it happened at seven fifty-six in the evening.
Okay, so do you know a little bit about the case, a background about it, or you just know that it was a homicide?
Well, on your crime mapping, you folks don't give too much information. All you folks have is, hey, you had a homicide and they gave us the so-called location and time. And there was a number, report number, but I didn't write it down. But my concern is, this is a homicide, okay, as far as I'm concerned. You know, we usually don't have homicide in our neighborhood. That's why right now I'm very concerned about.
Okay, so the case you're talking about, I think I was actually working on that night. It's still under investigation, but it wasn't actually a homicide. It was actually an attempted murder. So, it was probably misleading that on the crime mapping, I just, it didn't give you more details or more information about the case because it's still under investigation. But I believe that's the case that you're talking about where a male suspect possibly threw an accelerant on top of another male suspect and he was taken to the hospital in a critical condition.
Okay.
So, it wasn't a homicide. It's still under further investigation. And the male suspect, the male suspect was apprehended in the case.
Alright.
Yeah, that's good to know because a homicide is much worse than what you just gave us with someone throwing an accelerant on a person. And that's when it matters after that.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes. Oh, Wyland?
Lieutenant Yamashita.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for the follow-up on that robbery with the grandmother. Just want to say thank you because she walked out very angry last month and she didn't get any update. So, hopefully, she's been contacted with any updates to let her know that it's not closed because her mentality was that it was closed. So, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. I just wanted to bring some clarity to the case, just, just so, just so the grandmother could know that we didn't just close the case and dismiss it like that. You know, it's still pending further investigation. Like I said, if you guys have any other leads or any information regarding the case, a detective in the robbery detail from the Criminal Investigative Division will more than happy to be, accept any more leads or information regarding that case.
Well, I want to thank you for a very succinct report and you gave us the details that so we had nothing to really speculate on. But thank you for very thorough reports. Any other, anybody else from the board? Any questions or comments? How about from the audience?
Question.
From WebEx? Yes. Chair? Anybody?
Question.
Can you identify yourself?
Yeah, this is lost.
I'm sorry.
My question, my question to the officer is, yeah, my question to the officer is, there was a shooting in regards to a bus situation. I think one moped rider and passenger fired into the bus. My question is, it's starting? It's, was it gang-related or is it a random type of shooting? Is Hawaii starting to become like the rest of the continent?
Okay, so for that shooting that you're talking about, it, it didn't happen in your guys' area, actually. It happened more towards the Kalahi Police Station. And it's still under further investigation because that was just a few days ago, actually. So, the details for the case haven't been really released, but it was, like you said, like how the news reported, I mean, according to the news press, it stated that males on a moped approached the bus and they shot at it. I'm not sure if exactly if it was gang-related or if it was acquaintances or whatnot or if it was just random, but. No, I don't think it's, I don't think Hawaii is turning into the mainland at this time. I do believe that we have officers out here still doing their job diligently and we still are able to curb the crimes out there.
That's good to hear. Anything else from the board or the audience? If not, kind of thank you very much for a very thorough report. And have a good day. Keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you. You have a good night.
You too. Board of Water Supply, Iris, are you on board?
Hi, yes, I'm on my cellphone because my web's not working. So, sorry, I can't be there tonight. I'm coughing, so I'd rather not be there. I asked Camelia to post two things on it. One is the handout from the other month that I was unable to provide. So, I'm hoping when I come in, I can talk, you can see it. But it's the question about the rate increase from the five-year period. So, hopefully, you guys all have a chance to look at it on the Google Drive. And tonight's presentation, tonight's general announcement is about the other handout. It is the household questionnaire. So, we're, we're asking for people to participate in a water access and affordability survey that's taking place in the communities across the country. So, we encourage the public to fill out the questionnaire. It's till Sunday. You got time till Sunday, September fifteenth, to fill it out. And it takes about five to ten minutes to complete. So, your input will assist the board to implement programs that better help vulnerable residents, including our kupuna. So, and responses are confidential. So, if I was there, I would have handed it out, but I'm not, sorry. So, if you can go on to the Google Drive, there's a QR code you could scan it and do that, that way. There's also the flyers at the Satellite City Hall. And you can always go to boardofwatersupply.com to look up some information on that. So, that was my report for tonight. If there's any questions?
Any question from the board? Any from the audience? Any from WebEx? If not, Iris, thank you very much. So, I hope to see you down here one of these days.
I know. I was looking forward to being there tonight. Thanks. Hopefully, come on next month. Bye.
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Chair phone. Sorry.
Yes.
I think we skipped section election of officers.
Oh, yes. Well, thank you. I was going to get to that right after I jumped that. Actually, before we get to the elections, I want to make sure we have a quorum, but more so know who's present because I've been who's on WebEx over there. And we make sure that we, we want you to just call out the names to make sure we know who is here on a roll call.
Attendance, chair phone here.
Call out the names. They can respond here.
Iga.
Yeah.
Fa'afu. Magoy.
Here.
Mitsuda. Not here. Na'aua'au'ota? Pang?
Here.
Yamamoto? Yamamoto?
Forgot to unmute.
Oh, you're here?
Present, yeah, on WebEx.
White? Not here. Nita? Cantru? Christian? Ten members present. We have quorum.
Hey, thank you very much. I want to make sure who's, who's here. Yes.
Have a, this is Cora Yamamoto. I have a question. There's one person who doesn't, is not labeled and I don't know if there's a flower picture, a lot of flowers. Could that person identify themselves?
I'm sorry, say it again?
There, there's one person who I don't think has been identified.
Is that me you're talking about?
Oh, that's Iris. Hi, Iris. Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I thought it might be.
My audio is working.
Okay, you got, you got your answer.
Sorry, I wrote it down. Hopefully, you see it.
Yep, I see it. It's just no labels. I was, okay, got it.
Okay, now that we know we have a quorum, that's one reason why I jumped to government agencies. We have to have an election for a vice chair and also a treasurer. Now, during the last meeting that we had, the question came up. For a person to be nominated, does he or she have to be present physically or otherwise? And the answer we got was, the answer is yes. And when we say present, it can be physically present or via the WebEx. So, keeping that in mind, only the people either here or on WebEx who are part of the board can be nominated for these two positions. Any questions on that? Henry, you can come join us up here. Alright. First order of business under election of officers. Any, open up their nominations for vice chair. Nominations? Alright, let's, let's go. Let's go to treasurer. Any nominations for treasurer?
I nominate Darren for treasurer.
Darren Contral is nominated. Any of the nominations? I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the nominations, just raise your right hand. No opposition, motion's carried. Just to make it official, and I think this is the way we have to do it. We have to have a roll call. You don't have to have a roll call?
So, you can just do a unanimous vote if it's just one?
How come I have to have a roll call?
It was my mistake, sorry.
That's fine with me. So, just, can I just have a motion to elect? Is that? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to elect Darren Contral as our new treasurer.
So moved.
Moved by, oh, Carol?
Second.
Second and by Chance. Any discussion? All those in favor of electing as our new treasurer, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed? One abstention. Congratulations. Motion's carried. How about a big round of applause for our new treasurer? And Darren, welcome aboard. He's new on our board. And by the way, I'm sorry to disappoint you, but somebody told me we don't have any money. But that's okay. Alright, now going back, I'm going to open the nominations for vice chair. Any nominations for vice chair? If, no, no, go ahead.
If there's no nominations, we'll just defer to next month.
Defer to the next time. Alright, alright. Yes.
I'm going to return the favor and nominate Donald Nita.
Donald Nita is nominated. Are there any other nominations? If not.
Nominate Chance.
Chance is.
Chance is already our secretary.
It's a promotion.
Any other nominations for vice chair? If not, I'll entertain. I'm sorry?
I nominate Carol.
Alright, also nominated is Carol Kapu. Okay, who nominated her?
Jodell.
Oh, Jodell, alright. Any other nominations? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to nominate those.
Can I have a clarification?
Yes.
As a current candidate for office, am I allowed to be running for?
I'm gonna ask our, that's a good question, because I was gonna ask the same question. Just because you're a candidate doesn't mean you're precluded from becoming an officer unless you become elected, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion at the nomination be closed.
Move.
Second.
Uh, who, who moved?
Zodao.
Oh, Zodao, all right. And who's second? It was Cora?
Yep.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of closing nomination, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Motion's carried, nomination closed. We have two candidates. Mr. Donald Nita and Ms. Carol Kaapu. Uh, you know, I've known these two individuals for such a long time. Uh, do any of you wanted to give a campaign speech? Uh, who's, who's been on longest? I was thinking it's, we'll go by age. Donald, would you like to say any?
Yes, I will say something. If I am nominated, you folks know that I am very proactive, okay? So keep that in mind because I will not so-called stand for any type of nonsense, okay? Thank you.
Carol?
I think Donald is a great candidate.
Don't you, don't you guys wish that we had that kind of elections in our, in Honolulu? I've never heard of that before.
I, I would like to say something.
Yes.
I believe Carol would be an outstanding vice chair, okay? Um, she's very, as, as you know, she's very helpful through the, um, neighborhood board, our neighborhood board. Uh, when we had that pandemic, she went ahead and took care of the so-called, um, computers for notifying the people of our board, so. I believe, uh, she would be an outstanding vice chair. Thank you.
Wow, first time I've seen two candidates compliment each other. And just for your information, the chair has a prerogative, but I'm going to abstain from voting. Because I know these two individuals, and both of them are very capable. Uh, they've been on the board, I think as long as I have, not longer, so I, either one of them would be great. So at this time, my understanding, and I'm gonna do it this way, we're gonna have a roll call vote. And each individual have to come out and say, when you give your, your vote, whom you want as a vice chair. And I believe we need at least a majority, right? And a majority is consists of seven, six or seven, seven, right? We have thirteen. All right. All right, let's do a roll call vote. And just spout out, you know, shout out the name of your candidate of choice.
Okay, when I call your name, just call Nita or Kaapu. Iga.
Yes.
Which person?
Huh?
Which person, um, Nita or Kaapu?
First ten. First ten.
Uh, who would you like for vice chair?
Uh, we'd be sure.
Nita? Donald? Kaapu?
Nita.
Magoy?
Kaapu.
Mitsuda? Not here. Na'ohau Ota?
Nita.
Pang?
Carol.
Yamamodo?
Apu?
White? Not here. Cantru?
Nita.
Nita?
Carol.
Christian?
Nita.
Chair Fang?
I abstained. So what's the vote?
Five votes for Nita, four votes for Kaapu, so vice chair.
Uh, hold on, hold on, everybody. You have to have a majority vote to be elected. Now unless someone really thoroughly objects, I think these two individuals are very capable, and either one can really run our show and be our takeover in my absence. So my recommendation is this, and we've done it before. Uh, that we have two vice presidents. And in regards to the vote, who got the first, you know, who's first vice president, who's second vice, vice president? We look at the person who has the most votes being the first vice president, and the person who has the second highest vote as being the second vice president. Any, any discussion on that? Would, would somebody like to adopt that as?
Chair, I will remove my name from consideration. Thank you.
Can, can she withdraw after the vote?
No.
You're, you're creating a new thing. I'm withdrawing from the new thing that you are just creating.
Yes, she can withdraw.
She can withdraw?
She can withdraw? Oh, wow. I guess.
All right, so Carol has withdrawn, leaving Donald as our vice chair. Uh, do we have to take another vote, or what do we do now? Because we still need to vote for.
We.
Yeah. All right, we'll have to re-vote because Carol withdrew from the, the race. Okay, so again, we're gonna have a roll call. Oh, no, we don't have to have a roll call. We have only one person, right?
I have a question.
Yes.
And should we draw after the election?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I, I guess it's gonna be mine.
The, the law, the law has spoken. You can withdraw. Okay, uh, since we don't, since we do have only, uh, one individual.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, if Carol can withdraw, I guess I can withdraw too. Thank you.
Is that right?
Yes.
All right. All right, it, since, since we have two individuals withdraw, can I, uh, again, go back to my suggestion that we have two vice presidents? Is that okay? A shared vice presidency, that's what I mean. I'm sorry, I'm too involved with the national elections. But anyway, vice chair, is that okay?
Yep.
And if it's okay, then we'll do it by seniority of the person who has the highest vote or the person who's the oldest. Any objection to that, Carol? Carol, you have any objection, the highest vote or the oldest person? All right, first vice. All right, with that in mind and that suggestion, I'll, I'll entertain a motion that we have, uh, we elect two vice chairs. And the person with the highest vote becomes first vice chair, and the person who has the second highest vote be the, uh, second vice chair. Uh, can I entertain that motion?
I, I have a second motion.
No, not motion. I, I can't make that motion, but I can make that suggestion. You wanna move? You're not moving. Anybody to move that as a, a motion? May I? Yes. Can we defer this to the next meeting so we can actually get the ruse on paper so we understand it clearly? That's no problem. We can move that, defer this to the next meeting. Any objection to that? Okay, so as it stands now, we do not have a vice chair. Okay? So think about it for our next meeting. And I compliment both of the. And I said before, they do, both of them would make very good vice chairs. So unnecessary objections, we'll defer this to the next meeting. But we do have a treasurer, so congratulations against Darren. Okay, moving right along, without a vice chair. Um, filling up vacancies. Uh, let's see, we have one vacancy in, uh, this sub-district four. Anybody interested in that position? Okay, if not, moving right along. Any resident or community concerns? None? Uh, any reports of members and attendants of any meetings that may be, uh, of interest to us? Okay? Uh, Ompo?
Okay.
Girl?
Yep. Okay, the, um, monthly meeting of the Citizens Advisory Committee Committee to Ompo Transportation, um, did not meet in August as scheduled. It was postponed till September. And interestingly enough, this was because, um, there was, the sunshine law works. Uh, there was a citizen who noticed that there was no printed agenda, uh, that was published, um, uh, to the public, so it had to be postponed. So that, no, no meeting in August. We're deferring till September. Um, I would like to point out that Chair Fang sent out on Sunday, yesterday. So you look for it under eight eleven, and the subject matter, uh, subject line is, um, please distribute to your neighborhood board members from Samantha Lara. This is the, uh, comments on, it's a survey, another survey, on the Oahu Transportation Plan for 2050. Really looking down the road. Um, and I really encourage everyone to take a look. It says it takes fifteen minutes. I haven't taken it yet. Your deadline is the end of this month, eight thirty-one, August thirty-first. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's choosing between priorities. Um, so, you know, if you're really promoting bike transportation or walking or cars, then, you know, more parking, whenever. Um, then, uh, go take the survey. There's also a, an incentive, a hundred fifty-dollar Visa gift card. If you fill out the survey, you're entered into the, um, drawing, so. Please, please go do that. I will do that this week.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, please, I encourage you to do the survey for a very, very important subject. And especially affecting us here in Honolulu. All right, um, with that, our representative is Ed. And congratulations to, uh, our new, uh, not our new, but I guess our old mayor or continuing mayor.
Four more years.
Four more years. That means we're gonna see you for four more years then, right?
Yep. So, good evening, Edward Lospanos, Deputy Director, Department of Committee Services. I'm the mayor's rep for, um, Neighborhood Board fourteen. So a few highlights from the mayor's newsletter. Um, you can find that on the honolulu.gov website on their mayor's newsletter. Um, so the first update I have is city continues to add new treatment options for Oahu's chronically homeless population. So we're trying to create new, um, service centers and provide facilities that are pointed and, um, target some of the afflictions of, um, facing our homeless population, so. I mean, currently open for, for service at the Old First Line Bank location across from Mahala Park. Uh, we also, um, did a grand opening of the Waikiki Vista where we're doing a part family shelter and part affordable housing project over there on Kapialani Boulevard, but it's really a system to try and, uh, as the mayor's saying, segment the population. Because once you segment, then we can kind of scale and address the problem with the right solutions versus, uh, big mass solutions that have been done in the past. Um, next two items are about Honolulu Ocean Safety Department. The first one is the new acting director was sworn in at Honolulu Hallie following the creation of the, um, Honolulu Ocean Safety Department. And related to that, unfortunately, um, our ocean safety department lost one of their lifeguards in line of duty, Kamayo Perry, who was, um, out exercising on his break out there at, um, uh, Malaikanan, the winter crosswalk where he works. Um, so that was, there was a great, big remembrance ceremony for him out there. And the last two highlights, uh, really to Waikiki. First one is the new trash cans that we got in there. Um, you know, because it's so windy in that area, if you just have an open trash can, sometimes the trash flows out. Sometimes your hands are full and you don't, can't open it, you know, so there is a step lever that, or different ways they can open it, so you can make sure your trash goes in there and won't be wind-strewn and blown away. And then the last item is our Bahat Magani statue outside the Honolulu Zoo was, has been repaired. There was some vandalism that occurred. It'd take a while for the original artist to kind of get in there, repair the fractures, so that is back out. Uh, so those are the mayor's updates. I do have some follow-up items from the last meeting. Um, first one, there was a crosswalk at, um, eight-five-one North School Street. Um, this one, uh, DFM will be working to repaint that crosswalk. I mean, that's the mid-block, um, crosswalk by Joey Desa Baseball Field, yeah? Um, so that one, DFM will be looking and look at it, and they will be, um, repainting and repainting that and redoing the signs for that one. Because the signs aren't there either.
Can I take that off the agenda then? But should I wait till it's painted?
No, I, I don't think. I stroked through it. It wasn't painted.
What, it was?
This is the mid-block one by, um, the baseball field.
And it was, it has to be, oh, okay, so, but it have to repaint? What, what was the reason? What was the issue?
It was just to repaint it.
Yeah, has it been repainted?
No, has not been repainted, but DFM did take a look and they will be scheduling it for repaint.
So it will be repainted?
Yes.
Okay, the question that I had was, I can take it off the agenda because we can trust the city, right?
I would say yes.
I, I have a question. You know, you said eight-five-one, right?
Yep.
Eight-five-one, I brought it up and it's on School Street, not Judge Street.
Yeah, I think, I think the last meeting, I think it went in on my side is eight-five-one Judge Street, and that's kind of why I got this, um, report from DTS saying I gotta do a traffic intersection study. Eight-five-one Judge Street is kind of where Judge Street becomes Donakila Ave. That's where that is, unless you have, that's where you want the cross.
Does the agenda have the wrong address? Is it eight, eight-five-one School Street or Judge Street?
I believe, Carol, you raised it was eight-five-one School, right? Or is it Chance?
That's the crosswalk right before, um, the HPA, right?
Eight-five-one. Or it's, you know, just right across the park, Donakila Park. I brought that up.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that might have been.
It's eight-five-one School Street.
It's School.
Street for everybody. It's not Judge Street.
Yeah, I saw that on the agenda. I looked it up. I think that was, like I said, where Judge Street becomes Donakila Ave, but and there is no crosswalk over there, so if you guys want to crosswalk over there, uh, let me know and we can get that, that intersection studied.
So I'll leave it on the agenda with nothing's happened in regards to eight-five-one School Street, right?
That's the one that the, um, DFM's gonna vote to repaint.
Will repaint. All right, I'll take it up to you.
Thank you, but it's on the agenda as eight-five-one Judge Street.
Yeah, yeah, wrong address. Next?
Uh, I had a, I had a two-six-four-seven Leela Street. There was some sheet flow issue from the water. The stormwater kind of draining onto the person's property, property brought up during community concerns. So DTC did go out there, take a look at it. They will be planning when the, the next repayment project, so the only way to kind of alleviate that sheet flow action is to lower the grade of the road, because right now the asphalt's too high. So the curb, they affect, the curb effectively isn't working in that area. So they will be kind of redesigning that road. Next time they come through on the retaping project, they're gonna look to kind of grade it, bring it, strip it further down, um, to provide, to alleviate that, uh, funding issue that's happening on right now. Next item I had was about the new bus route number three oh seven and the impacts of the Gulik Avenue, um, overpass which will be closing between June twenty, June of twenty twenty-five and July of twenty twenty-five. So DTS is aware of that work and they're working to reroute that bus, um, and looks like it'll cross instead at, um, Hill Street. At Mokouaya instead of Gulik. From DTS. I mean, they gave me the full route. I can read the full route, but, um, we're looking at Gulik Street, the overpass is gonna cross at Mokouaya, cross over at Mokouaya instead. Yeah.
There's no.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no pass on Gulik Street?
This is the new route. This is the new route, three oh seven.
Okay, next?
I had a couple items about street sensors that weren't working or not working properly. Kapalama Avenue and School Street, as well as Makuaheina and Hala Drive intersections. Both those, oh, Carol's giving me the thumbs up that it's been fixed. What happened was the repaving contractor did damage the pressure sensors on there, so they had to go back and fix it. So when the complaint was raised, we were on a timed intersection instead of a sensor, so. Carol gave me the thumbs up that it's been fixed. Sometimes my departments get on it right after we, after Camelia submits it, and then a month, a whole month passes before I get here, and some of these get fixed. I was hoping it was the case with that crosswalk on School Street, but didn't happen. And then last item I had was drainage at Napuayup Mini Park, and that one, parks did not get to, so I'll do that one next month. They promised to me they'll get it done next month. I think there was some funding on the sidewalk as well as.
It's the Malka area of the park, this, when it rains, just drain, doesn't drain. How about the item number on the unfinished business, sixteen oh four Hanae Loop? What's the status on that? I believe, my understanding is that they got cited, and what did they do? Did they take out a new permit?
I believe they, they did submit for a new permit on that one. I don't have that report from last meeting.
Can you just double check on that? And if it's a new permit, then it's kind of moot. It's a new ballgame. And the other one, I believe, would be, uh, two more, oh, one more. Ala Kapalama. I believe this is Don speeding. What's that?
It was the last meeting, and I believe Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office had indicated that they had met. They had heard the complaints, and they had met with Department of Transportation. That one, I did talk to Mr. Nita before the meeting. He did share with me with the letter that the former, maybe Zuno's office had submitted to the city in Kanae, Honolulu, so I can follow up on that one.
Yeah, you, so who's got the ball? You or Tyler?
I can.
Well, you work with Tyler then?
I'll work with.
I'm gonna leave your name. I'm gonna leave city rep there. Okay, Donald, is that okay? All right, thank you. Any questions? I think that covers it. Any questions from the board? From the audience? How about Webex? No? Ed, thank you very much. All right. All right, moving right along. Next, we have Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam. Anybody from his office?
Hi, this is Lisa Leonardo.
Hi, go ahead.
Okay. So, right off the bat, I'm just gonna share that items from the previous minutes that I do not have updates on would be the Judge Street crosswalk. And the new Uwenu safety issues from the residents of Fifteen Craig Side. So hopefully I can bring updates at the next meeting. I just wanted to share that last week, Wednesday night, HPD and DPP executed a raid on an illegal game room on the Leila Street. This raid was a little different than past raids, in that DPP was ready to inspect and ready to give citations. And there were numerous citations that they were able to give out. Then, this is all a part of the efforts to go after the landlords of the illegal game rooms that continue to let them proliferate in our communities. And it's not just about the illegal game rooms. It's all about other issues that come with the game rooms, such as the violence, the drugs and guns. City Council has adopted a resolution twenty-four one forty-three, creating an illegal game rooms task force. And they are supposed to come back to the city council by October eighth with recommendations on how to better improve our enforcement and help in preventing the spread of more of those game rooms. Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, along with Councilmember Kia Aina, have introduced Bill forty-four to lower speed limits in school zones to twenty miles per hour. They are currently at twenty-five. The council aims to pass this law by the end of the year to improve driver and pedestrian safety. And then last, a couple of reminders, just if you have input on parks in your area that you want to add dogs on leash, please let us know by August fifteen. And you can either send them to Councilmember Dos Santos Tam or straight to me, Lisa Leonardo. And then just a reminder, Councilmember has put out his August newsletter for information on any policy and activities that he is involved in. And that's all that I have right now.
Thank you very much. In regards to the illegal gaming rooms, I'm gonna put that on the agenda. Can you let us know what the result is or in regards to that bill? I'm really curious to see if they can basically confiscate the house, you know, its illegal activities. Because we remember now, we had a, you know, a problem with gaming rooms in Honolulu Street, so we were interested. That's, that's number one. Number two, in regards to the dog leash, I believe prick or wrong people, Napuayup Park allows dogs, but they have to be on leash. That's up in Alava Heights. I don't know what other parks they are. How about the park that's Alava Heights Park, Alava Drive? There's a, there's a park down below. Do they have the leash law too?
So, um, I guess our feedback really is just whether or not there are any other parks within your area that you would like to add it on.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
I only know of one. I don't know about the other parks within our area.
The other park is by, um, um, shots. Where's that street going up La Nequila? It's gonna be on the side of the mountain. That's called Alava Park.
No, no, I know what you're saying. You're gonna go up La Nequila, you turn this way. That's, uh.
That's Alava Park.
That's Lulena Street.
I don't know.
That's Lulena Street?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, put it this way, if we don't hear from any of our representatives here on the board about any of our parks wanting dogs on leashes, then I think it's a moot question.
Okay.
Mind.
That's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions, Don?
We got any updates on that sidewalk on Judge Street?
Uh, no, that, I don't have any updates on that as of yet. That.
Okay, and my understanding is that that sidewalk would be an asphalt sidewalk, not a concrete sidewalk, correct?
Um, you know what? That's a good question. I, I can ask. I'm, I was not aware of whether you had chosen that.
Yeah, yeah, just get back to us. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
May I? Hi, Lisa. This is Wallen Christian, board member, Subdistrict Five. Can I get clarification on if there's a bill being written for the dogs on leash, and what is the bill number?
No, there's not a bill right now. I guess it's just kind of a proactive thing that he's asking, because there was somebody in a different neighborhood board who had asked, can we add one of their parks to add dogs on leash? And so instead of going piecemealing it and hearing from different neighborhoods, he just put out the letter to ask, is there anybody else, so he can take all of it together at one time? So I mean, I mean, basically, if you would like one of your parks that currently is not dog on leash, then you would just tell us that. But it, nothing needs to change if you guys do not decide. It's, it's not anything that, we're just trying to be proactive in getting all the information at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Henry?
Aren't all dogs supposed to be on leash?
Well, some of these parks don't allow dogs in the park. So it, that would be the question, like, did you want a park that you could have your dog on leash? Which means that then the dogs can come into the park.
Okay, so dogs are not allowed at the parks?
Currently, in the ones that you, I think we listed on the letter specifically to your neighborhood board, which parks are in the area that do not have dogs on leash, or dogs period, you're not allowed to have dog. So the question was, are any of these parks ones that you would like to add dogs on leash?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Audience? Webex? Okay, if not, thank you very much. Moving right along. Senator Rhodes? Anybody from Senator Rhodes's office?
Hey, Chair Fong, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Chair, Glenn Young here from Senator Rhodes's office. Good evening, Chair, Board. You know, we submitted our report to you folks. Pretty much the same. There's, there's only one thing that's different. Senator Rhodes basically saying if anyone has any, um, any ideas for any bills, because we're starting to gear up for next session. Just give us, just give us a holler. Let us know any of your ideas. Barring that, if there are any questions for Senator Rhodes?
Any questions from the board? Yes, Donald?
Yes. Is the Senator still the chair of the Judiciary Committee?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, can the Senator look at this helicopter, army helicopters that fly over in our area? Because at one time, maybe about three, four years ago, our representative was gonna initiate something that there would be no flying zone on land. They have to go from the ocean side and then come in. Because there's a lot of activities on helicopters passing over our district. And I know a couple incidents. My house started to rattle, as far as I'm concerned. Because of all the so-called accidents that the helicopters are having, I would like to see something that the helicopters fly on the ocean side and not on, not over land in our area. Can the Senator look at that?
You know, I recall we actually kind of looked into that maybe a few years ago. Let me, let me see what we, we came up with, and then I'll talk to the Senator, and then we can, we can try and figure something out, because it was an issue. So.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Let me interject. I believe a few years ago, Ed Case's office was looking to that same issue about to, you know, the community. And maybe you can double check with his office and see what, you know, what happened to that, the particular issue.
Okay, I can check with Ed Case's office.
Yeah, yeah, I remember. I don't know what happened to it.
Okay.
And, but you're saying that, for my board here, are you saying that you guys have helicopters flying close to your houses?
Well, they fly low.
Low?
And depending on the speed and the vibration, yes. Because the thing is that it cannot force the wind.
Yeah.
You know, depends on the wind too. And as far as I'm concerned, as a safety issue.
Yeah.
Because the thing is that, I know one time that Commander had a whole bunch, maybe about fifty helicopters that flew over. And his answer was, because our so-called brigade was together, they made a flyway. And to me, that's not a smart answer. I mean, you know, you don't fly fifty helicopters over land. You know, as far as I'm concerned, the military, we agree, we need the military, but the military has to respect the civilian. You know, it, it's a two-way street. I mean, why not fly around from the ocean and come in from, say, why not?
Well, hopefully you'll get your answer by the next meeting. Senator Rhodes's office, okay?
You know, I have a follow-up question. So this is specifically army helicopters?
Yes, because the Navy helicopters fly in, say, Polly, the Polly, the Wano Valley. Because I have seen the Navy helicopters, the psyching, that from the airport, they must be picking up personnel. And they go down, and after, by a long time, they head up was Polly. And from there, they can go to the so-called marine station. That's, that's not too bad. The one I really wanna know is the army helicopters, because they fly the longest distance. They fly from Hawaii Kai all the way to Waheva. And that is a long distance, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well, I'll double check on that. Are you ready? Okay, moving right along. Senator Kim, Senator Kim's office.
Hi, my name's Kathy. I'm from Senator Kim's office. My apologies, my camera is not, is giving me some technical difficulties tonight. Senator Kim is sorry she couldn't make it. She's currently traveling back from a conference. But she would like you to know that her August report, committee report was sent out. There is no changes. Is there any questions or concerns that you would like to bring up?
Any questions from, for Senator Kim? And none? If not, thank you very much. Thank the Senator.
Oh, thank you. And just to add, sorry, Senator's office is open year-round, so if anyone after the meeting or throughout the year has any concerns, please feel free to reach out to us. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. She's been very responsive to a lot of our concerns. Thank you.
That's good.
Next, Representative Takunuchi.
Hi, everybody. Good to see everyone. Just a couple of quick updates. I know we took the Botanical Garden homeless encampment site off the agenda, but I did have a small update. I know I saw, and then I reached out to the city, both Fire Department and then our contacts at DOT and DFM, because I know, and some of you might have seen this on social media, there was a couple fires that were happening under the bridge, so I just, I saw it on social media first, and then I reached out to the city just to see what was happening. Honolulu Fire Department confirmed that there were two separate incidents that happened on the same day under the freeway. They were both set by homeless individuals in the encampment there. So I, after I got that information back, I did another follow-up with our contacts at DOT at the state, and then DFM at the city on the sweep we've been waiting on. DOT did say that after that incident, they went and they cleared out whatever debris and all the like the damage and what was left behind with the ash and everything from their areas. We did not have an answer from DFM about it, but in addition to that follow-up, I had also flagged it for the Managing Director's Office as a way to say, hey, you know, this, we've been waiting on this, this incident happened. Is there any way you guys can help expedite this sweep that we've been waiting on? So just a small update on that. And then, uh, oh, just a short update too. If you don't know about it yet, we actually have a state program. It's the Freeway Service Patrol. This is a free program. Sorry, I can't read my notes. So if you have a breakdown on the freeway between on the H one freeway between Makapilo and, no, that's, sorry. H one freeway between Makapilo, and I think something's missing from my report, but I'll get that to the port on the H two, and then the H two between YPO and Middle Street. You can call the Freeway Service Patrol. They have kind of like, it's a tow truck, and then they also have certain, like, you know, basic services that they can help you. It's meant to, you know, get the car off the freeway right away to kind of free up traffic. It's available Monday through Friday, five AM to seven PM, and they mostly, I, I see them too, like, kind of patrolling. It says FSP, if you see the tow trucks just driving the length of the freeway and around the congested areas. And you can call them at eight oh eight, eight four one, four three five seven. And if you guys just want to read more about them, their website is www.fspHawaii, spelled out, dot com. And then I will double-check the range of that, because I think my notes are a little bit incomplete, but I'll get that over to the board in a few minutes.
Can you give the number again?
Sure. Number is eight oh eight, eight four one, four three five seven. And I think, if you guys have felt it in my office, he told me, like, before he even, like, worked at the Capitol, he ended up using it one time randomly. I think they actually saw him broken down, and he said they are, they are very good. The service is very good, and they're very friendly and helpful. He thought just for that. That's just two quick updates I have. If there's any questions, I can take back. Happy to do so.
Yes, thank you. Again, you know, I was curious. This homeless camp, campment, under the, what bridge is that again?
So this is the School Street side of Laleo, the La Nequila Botanical Garden. Yeah, the one we've been talking about for years. But because there was an incident there, I tried to use as a way to kind of hopefully further them on a little bit. because there was an incident there, I tried to use as a way to kind of hopefully further them on a little bit and hopefully we on the waterfall side?
Yeah.
But you, but you said they cleaned up the rubbish?
DOT.
They didn't remove the?
Well, DOT went down, and DOT has been going pretty regularly. It's on their rotating site, so DOT will go, but they only clean their area, which is only directly under freeway and school street. So we are waiting for the coordinated sweep to get you know, the, the bigger area with the park side.
What concern was it? Under the bridge itself? Um.
Yeah, and I think.
But you said they had a fire, they went down, cleaned up the rubbish, but they didn't remove the people under the bridge?
Um, I, I'm sure if they were on the DOT portion, they probably told them to move along, but they, they probably just stepped, re-steps over into the park side and then came back after. That's why we're trying to do the coordinated sweep.
Technically, they didn't enforce it. They just asked them to move. Involvement means, you go in there, you enforce the law, and if they come back.
Yeah.
They'll either sit home or take them to the
So DOT can't enforce or they're, they're not doing, they're, they're only clearing their portion and they're, they can't, they're not clearing the city portion, which is why we're trying to do the coordinated sweep.
Representative, let me interject one real quick. The, now I know where it is. It's right adjacent to the Liliokalani Gardens. Now, my understanding, just to cut to the chase, the city was gonna work with the state in regards to actually a joint jurisdiction, okay?
Yes.
Concurrent jurisdiction, I call it legally. And that the, the cops can go in and arrest them on state land. So what happened to that? Can you, can you follow up on that? Where's Ed? Oh, there's Ed.
I think DOT is just waiting to do the coordinated sweep and then they'll probably bring everyone up.
That was last year.
Yes, and I've been trying to follow up with them every month for several years for this work to get the regular sweeps done.
Can we ask you two? While you're still in office, you two over here to kind of work together to get, I mean, this, that's been there for, uh,
Probably five.
Five years now?
Yeah.
Because the last time I walked there, I noticed that all the homeless guys are uh, putting out their, their laundry drying on the, the fence. But there was nobody in the Liliokalani Gardens. It's a very nice ar- area, but. So can you folks work together?
Yeah, I, I've been
Five years? Please, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Wieland.
Jenna, you know on School Street, right where the fire was? So about three weeks ago, there was a lot of trash right alongside the walkway. Who do we call to get that trash taken care of? I'm assuming Department of Transportation is one of them that's supposed to be going out there cleaning it. But it was out there for like almost
On School Street or was it?
It was on School Street. It was on School Street. Right on the bridge, like you're crossing over from Central Pacific Bank going towards Punch Bowl. It's like right before the on, the on-ramp to the freeway.
Okay, but on School Street.
It's, yeah, so it's like right where the fire was. I know where the fire was. And it's on that, that, that little bridge that you can see Liliokalani.
I can, I can confirm jurisdiction.
Yeah.
I, I would, I wanna say yes, DOT, but I actually
So do you have a number that we could call? Because they always leave trash right there. So it's an eyesore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I can send you guys the number. Um, DOT just has, if it's DOT, they have, you know, just like, like a, like, yeah, like a calling number to like clear up areas. I can send that over.
Anything else?
I have one.
Yes, go ahead, Chance.
I know a few months back, or maybe a ways back anyways. Uh, and then my mind's a little fuzzy right now, so I might get some bits wrong. I had brought up possibly an idea for a bill where it would allow the state to essentially remove people in in regards to the safety, especially in areas where if there's a storm, if there's any sort of rain going on, it, it poses a very heavy safety risk. That includes, you know, the bridges underneath, or that includes canals where there's bridges above it, or even Liliokalani Botanical Gardens. I'm not sure if this might help move this process along smoother, you know, for you folks at the state, but it's just an idea I'm gonna put out there again, and I can clarify if
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I'm not I could start it. I have a bill list going. I haven't started drafting anything. Um, I know Senator's office mentioned that, but happy to work with you on that. Maybe we can kick around some ideas and I can send you a draft to see if that's what you're thinking and yeah, happy to see if we can look into some kind of safety clarification. Yeah, to help with enforcement in those kind of situations.
Okay, thank you, because this isn't the only the only place where this has happened. I have the canal near, nearby my house where it's happened before, where there's been homeless people and they've left trash there. Um, our, so us ourselves have to go in and clean it up, so. My, no, it's, thank you.
Any questions from the board? The audience? Webex? Hey, thank you very much, Representative.
Everybody.
Next on the agenda, let's see. Uh, Representative, uh, Mizuno, or anyone from her office? Representative Holt, or anyone from his office? Governor's representative?
Aloha, can you all hear me okay?
Oh, welcome. Yes, we can hear you. Uh, Dallas, is that right?
Correct.
All right, go for it.
Aloha, everyone. Checking in with you all and sharing that the latest newsletter, the Kahalo Ho, is available at Hawaii.gov. This month marked the new one-year anniversary of the Maui Lahaina fires. So there's a lot of progress when it comes to the rebuilding portion of it, from education to healthcare to housing. There's also, uh, just school season happening now. So that is available on the website, and I'm just here to take any questions or follow-ups for Gov's Communications Office.
Any questions from the board? Uh, I think, uh, I'm, I'm glad to read that they, as an attorney, that they hopefully settled the matter in regards to the fire. I mean, it would have really been prolonging the agony just to have it in court. So congratulations. I hope it works out. Any, anybody else from the board? Audience? Webex? If not, thank you for joining us. Our regard to the governor.
Mahalo, Charis. Thank you.
All right, anybody from, uh, Representative Ed Case's office? None. All right, on next on the agenda, approve the minutes. I'll entertain a mo- well, first of all, any correction to the minutes of July 8th, 2024? If none, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of July 8th, 2024. So moved.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you know the minutes? Um, under it, under every line, there is a number?
Donalds, where are you referring to again?
If you look at the report, there is, um, you know.
Which page?
No, my, my, uh, person who was not next to me, very informative, told me what it was. Thank you.
It's, it's the video time.
Okay, all right, all right. Any other questions? If not, this, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Moved by Carol, second by Chance, approve the minutes of, uh, just July. Uh, what was it? Where is the minute? Oh, July 8th, 2024. All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Motion, no opposition, motion carried. The minutes are approved. Uh, next unfinished business, we've taken care of item A, B, C. The last thing on the unfinished business is the Liliha and Chris, Palama Christmas Parade I've been at. Vern, welcome.
I only appear at Christmas. You can see me at Christmas. Um, I wanna thank the board for their endorsement at last meeting. I'm sorry I couldn't make the meeting, but I'm here today to thank all of you folks for your endorsement. Uh, we need some endorsements from some businesses in the area, which, you know, I can get. Uh, but I do appreciate your assistance. Now comes the hard part. Parades are not free. Um, we're gonna be seeking donations and maybe by next month or month after that, I'll be um, having a vehicle where people can donate and the, the donation will be tax deductible. So I'm working on that. Um, primarily, we need to raise about $2,000. That's what a parade costs. And primarily that's to, um, pay for the buses for the Kwanahu school students and mostly to, um, reap here's like the Corvette Club, we give them a hundred dollar donation. Simp- simple things like that. So it's not, not big money. The Lions pay for the candy, the trolley, um, and this year, because we're coming under Kamame Alliance, which I'm a member of, the insurance is paid for. A lot of these things and, and the signage that, um, notifying people on Liliha Street. That's my signage company to put out the signs. But other than that, it's a relative inexpensive parade, but we do need help. Thank you.
Before you, before you go, questions? Yes?
Um, in regards to donations, if we're writing a check, who should the check be made out to?
Oh, I have a flyer. It should be made out to Kamame Alliance Club Foundation.
I'll tell you what you do, Vern. Email me and then I'll, I'll disseminate it. And then I can also make it. When is, when is the, it's Chris, it's right after Thanksgiving.
The day after Thanksgiving.
Yes, we have time, so.
Yeah, we have time, but I, I just wanted to put, because, you know, I donate, Wes donates, our neighborhood donates, but, you know, it's kind of hard to ask like six people to raise $2,000, so.
But anyway, email me, enter the flyer, and I'll disseminate it to our board. If they can disseminate from that, why not?
And, and we'll make sure the foundation gives, that there, there are formal 51C3. And but on the, the memo put, memo portion put Liliha Palama Christmas Parade.
Okay.
That'll differentiate, so.
And by the way, I'll give up my Corvette to save you some money.
Well, the, the Corvette Club, they do it for fun. And, uh, but we like to give them a hundred dollars for gas for showing up. I mean, they're really, really nice guys. But what's amazing is, you know, they keep coming, they, they keep, you notice they, every day they have a new Corvette. These guys.
Hey, I'll, I'll take the old Corvette. I've been asking on how long.
I know you guys are gonna come for the parade, but they got a real nice Corvette.
Anyway.
I'm, I'm getting off track.
Thank you very much. And by the way, I want to, um, you know who our representative is, right? Yeah, Darren, thank you for. Yes, I know. So thanks, Darren. Yeah. We'll be there again with our and, and for all of you who are gonna be participating in the, don't forget, now make sure you see what Ron's wearing. That's, and Camelia, that's our official shirts. So when we have a parade, hopefully we'll all be wearing the same shirts. Who does not have a shirt, by the way? I didn't get one. One. Uh, can you check with Camelia and give, you, her, your size, okay? Anybody else? I think everybody got one, right? Did you get one? Okay. And I want to thank everybody who participated last year. See you guys again this year. All right, um, I believe that's all on the unfinished business, new business. We took care of A and B. Uh, community organizations, Malahia?
Chair.
Yes.
Did you ask for community concerns?
Yeah, I did. Do you have some that you wanna bring up? No, I did agree. Yeah. Um, community organization, Malahia, anybody? Anybody here from St. Francis? Lana Kila.
I, uh, handed out the Lana Kila newsletter. Just a couple things to let you folks know about. November 1st is the 55th anniversary of Lana Kila Multipurpose Senior Center. And there won't be a particular celebration, but there is a souvenir booklet and it's available for $10. So if you're interested in getting, um, a copy of that, you can contact Lana Kila Senior Center. And I think that Wes, we got something in there, right? A neighborhood board put, put
I, I paid for the ad. I took an ad on behalf of the neighborhood board congratulating them. You don't have to pay me back. I was more happy to contribute.
Thank you. And then on August 31st, they're gonna have a blood drive for the Hawaii Blood Bank, and there will be, that's August 31st from 8:30, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And you do need to make a reservation, and the number is 808-848-4770. So you need to make a reservation to go. And other than that, there are lots of classes and lots of things happening at the center. Please, if you're 60 or over, please join in and have some fun.
I'm sorry, I was just All right, we lost one of you guys qualified. Any questions? Yes, Chance? No. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, what's the last? Friends of Liliha Library, I guess Brandon would have the report. Anybody know about the library? I gotta go down there one of these days. Has anybody been down there? Anybody to the, been to the new library? I better go. I wonder where they have, it says it's pretty nice looking and very well-stocked. I thought we were supposed to have a grand opening. I guess not. Not yet. That's been three years, two years? Hmm, okay. Any other nonprofit organizations? Okay, if not, uh, announcements. Next meeting is on Monday, September 9th, 2024. Uh, same time, uh, same venue, and don't forget, um, think about, um, electing a vice chair. And with that, just in case, and I will say this, being military, if something should happen to me and we do not have a vice chair or an acting vice chair, the chain of command goes down to the secretary. All right, just to make sure you know. And if the secretary can't do it, the treasurer, just so we have a chain of command, okay? If not, if anything else for the good of the party, as they say, any announcements? If not, it is, it'll, ooh, 7:59. 7:59, entertain a motion to adjourn? Some of, moved by Wieland, is there a second?
Sorry, Chair Fong, I'm not seconding anything, but I wanted to double-check. Did we go over community concerns?
Yes.
We did?
Yeah, very beginning.
Very, yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry.
And by, oh, by the way, before I forget, um, Spencer was supposed to be here this evening, okay? I don't know. I, I emailed him. He said he was gonna come. I s- I still have his, um, his aloha present. So if you folks still want, anybody's, again, that wants to contribute, just, uh, let me know this. And you can give me the, it can, you know, the, the set contribution, uh, if you, so these are after this meeting. But I'll email him again in meeting, I hope. All right, uh, if not, uh, I, I believe there was a motion to adjourn. There was a second. Yes, do you want a second?
Yep.
Chance, seconds. Uh, all in favor, just say, uh, raise your right hand. Okay, opposed? Motion's carried. Have a great evening and thanks for coming. And thank you for the audience for coming.